Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, July 15, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation up for discussion by Pittsburgh City Council. The Finance and Law Committee, Mr. Lavelle is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 483. Resolution approving a fee schedule presented by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for use in the city's permitting and agreements involving small cell facilities. Bill Number 506. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with VJ Kapoor, the Kapoor Company, for professional services in connection with the FOP interest arbitration in an amount not to exceed $35,000. Bill Number 507. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Howard J. Woods Jr. and Associates LLC for professional services in connection with the PUC litigation and related matters, amount not to exceed $50,000. Bill Number 508. Resolution amending Resolution Number 829, authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant PC for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total cost of $35,000 to $305,000. Bill Number 509. Resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of Curtain &amp; Heathrow LLP in an amount not to exceed $11,864.05 for professional legal services and expert advice regarding source of income litigation. Bill Number 510. Resolution amending Resolution 587, which is authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fox Rothschild LLP for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claims Act litigation by increasing the total cost from $45,000 to $235,000 to $280,000. Bill Number 511. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into a professional services agreement with Cohen Law Group to address a matter of pending telecommunications and cable regulatory litigation in an amount not to exceed $29,000. Bill Number 512. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with the Jones Pasadena PLLC for professional legal services for an employment-related matter before the Human Relations Commission, amount not to exceed $24,000. Bill Number 513. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Cozen O'Connor for professional legal services in connection with an employment-related matter for an amount not to exceed $15,000. Public Works Committee, Mr. Coghill is the Chair. We have Bill Number 500. Resolution authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into temporary construction easements in lieu of eminent domain with the owners of certain properties in the 24th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, the Cowley Park, for landslide remediation work related to public park purposes. Bill Number 501. Resolution authorizing the Director of the Department on Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into temporary construction easements in lieu of eminent domain with the owners of certain property in the 19th Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, known as 1599 Fallowfield Avenue and 1545 Fallowfield Avenue for landslide remediation work related to public roadway purposes. Bill Number 502. Resolution granting unto Mark D. Natalee, their successors in assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new retaining wall and fence at Sycamore Street and Red Oak Way in the 19th Ward, Second Council District. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wilson is the Chair. We have deferred papers. We have Bill Number 492. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with community-based organizations for community and economic development for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city and providing operating support for these groups and provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed $500,000. Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee, Mrs. Strasburger is the Chair. We have new papers. We have Bill Number 505. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement with SciCom Data Systems, Inc., for professional services relating to continuing maintenance, support, and upgrades to city law, the Department of Law's legal case management and administrative support software system, cost not to exceed $11,376. Bill Number 515. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a three-year contract or agreement with Esprit, granting uncapped citywide access to Esprit's products for all departments. Bill Number 516. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into startup participation agreements with selected entities as part of the sixth cohort of PGH Labs and further authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test products and services as part through PGH Labs. And Bill Number 521. Resolution repealing, amending, and reenacting Resolution Number 18 of 1983, effective January 20, 1983, entitled, "Resolution Authorizing and Directing That the Bureau of Cable Communications, Department of Public Works Broadcasts All of Council's Regular Legislative Sessions, Standing Committee Meetings, Setting forth the Responsibilities of the Department of Innovation and Performance with respect to meetings of City Council and to reflect various changes in the city's departmental organizational structure and other changes to reflect technological innovations since 1983." This piece of legislation is sponsored by Reverend Burgess. That concludes the reading of the legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a great day.
57. Resolution Appointing De'Monte Walker to serve as a Commissioner for the Gender Equity Commission of the City for a term to expire June 30, 2023.
Thank you. And Ms. Walker?
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Great. I just want to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about your appointment and what you hope to accomplish with your addition to the commission.
Absolutely. So first, I'd like to thank-
This is an opening statement.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
We can.
All right. Okay. First, I'd like to thank council for having me today and for considering Mayor Paduto's appointment of me to the Gender Equity Commission. I'd also like to thank Mayor Paduto for considering me. I see this as an opportunity, one, just sort of by nature of birth, being Black and female, obviously, and also being an economic development professional here in the City of Pittsburgh. I see this as an opportunity to help implement a lot of the recommendations that have already been done by the great work of the commission. I think that we have had a cycle of planning and trying to understand what our issues are as a city, and I think that we've reached the juncture where it's become a moral and economic imperative that we figure out how to address these concerns and issues and that we start putting teeth to the recommendations. So again, very honored by this appointment and your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you. I just, I'll turn it over to council members, then I'm going to add some comments. Do we have members that would like to ask any questions?
Council President, I would.
Please, Councilman Cross.
Thank you.
You can see.
Good morning, De'Monte. How are you?
I'm doing wonderfully. How are you, Councilman Cross?
Good. Nice to see you. And thanks for being here with us. Can we talk a little bit about trans women, especially trans women of color, and how we can do our best to serve what is really very much so an underserved community in terms of gender, whether it is gender identity or whether it is a more fluid sexuality? And I just would be curious about what your thoughts might be about how that would affect the job you do.
Absolutely. So I will say that it is challenging in this country, in this city, to be Black. It is challenging in this city to be, you know, to be female, and it is challenging in this city to be trans, and it's even more so. And so I think that trans women have unique needs. They deal with a level of bias and some barriers that, you know, other women are not experiencing. And I think that we've got to really focus on how to ensure that we're being intersectional in our attempt to address some of these issues and to make sure that that population does not feel isolated. And most importantly, I think that we have to ensure that they have a seat at the table to talk about their own issues and talk about what they deem to be the best practices towards solving the issues and that we not try to figure it out for them. That a lot of this has to be experience-based informed and that, again, we can do all the data and all the research we want to, but those qualitative narratives and those experiences are going to be very important to bring to the forefront. I'm also very, very alarmed by the number of trans women that are being murdered and how those murders are not being solved and it's not being taken seriously. And I think that we really need to focus on, you know, dealing with some of the ignorance that's out there around what it means to be a trans woman of color. And so we have, you know, organizations like Sisters PGH and Brothers PGH who are at the forefront of dealing with these issues. And I want to make sure that when we're talking about this, that we're not talking at them and we're talking with them and letting them drive some of the change that's necessary.
I really appreciate your answer, and I appreciate your level of enlightenment on the subject. And there are small glimmers of hope. Recently, there was a trans woman elected to City Council in Wheeling. You know Rosemary? You know of Rosemary? Rosemary Ketchum. I had the opportunity to actually speak with her of all places, and I'm familiar with Wheeling because I have family from Wheeling. I would not think that would be the sort of the birthplace of a constituency that would elect a young trans woman, especially by council district, not at large seats. But clearly, she struck a chord with constituency, and they had enough of a belief in her to send her to represent them on Wheeling City Council. So there are small glimmers of hope out there. And they give me courage and that things can, will change.
They will change.
Yeah, they will. But we're responsible for that change, right? We are the change we wish to see in the world, right? And we are the leadership that calls out for that change, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Recently, I had the pleasure of watching a documentary on Netflix called Disclosure, and I have spoken to a couple of council members about it. I thought I was actually going into the subject as someone that was, I would like to say, enlightened on the subject of trans people and the different hurdles and obstacles and challenges that they faced. But I came away from watching that documentary thinking, boy, I don't know what I think I know. And even I need to polish up on, you know, how quickly the world changes and how important it is to be respectful and mindful of everyone that, you know, has a foothold on the planet here and to make certain that they are loved and welcomed and nurtured and nourished. And so any of those out there that might not have had an opportunity to watch Disclosure, it is streaming on Netflix, and it was incredibly powerful and quite enlightening on the subject.
Very much so. And there's a lot, and I do not pretend to be an expert on trans women issues. I am not. I do know that I have a heart that wants to make sure that anybody that is being marginalized across the lines of difference has a seat at the table and that their voice is being respected and heard. And on the point about Disclosure, I watched the documentary, and it was very illuminating and very enlightening. And one of my favorite takeaways was the fact that Sandra Caldwell, she was a character in The Cheetah Girls. So I grew up on Cheetah Girls, and I did not know that she was a trans woman. And so it's one of my favorite characters in The Cheetah Girls, and now even more so after learning that from Laverne Cox's documentary. So thanks for sharing that.
Yeah. It hearkens back to Harvey Milk and a very simple message he had that you just come out, right? You just, we're just honest and truthful of who we are, and then people come to see that we're just your sons and daughters and brothers and sisters and, you know, doctors and lawyers and, you know, cashiers, you know? And we run the whole spectrum, right? So I do, I, because of my work with you and my experience with you, I believe that you are true and honest in what you put forward, and I know you're going to do an amazing job on the Gender Equity Commission. I am happy to vote for your, not endorsement, forgive me, your appointment. And as always, it's a genuine pleasure to have you here in the city and to be able to work with you, De'Monte.
Thank you. It's an honor, and I really do appreciate the wonderful comments. I've had the pleasure of working with you across a couple of different issues, and it's really been an illuminating experience for me, understanding more about your district and the needs in that community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm done, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other council members?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Lavelle. And I do want to say we're joined by Councilman Lavelle, Councilman Coghill, and Councilman Cross, obviously. Councilman Lavelle.
Thank you. I don't have any questions, actually. I just want to say thank you to Director Walker for all the work that she does, both at the URA, on the various boards that she sits on, as well as this new commission that she will be a part of. I think the work she does in this city is extraordinary, so I just want to thank her for her time and her efforts.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other members? Hearing no other members, I just want to say, I also want to thank you, De'Monte. I think that you're amazing. You know my feelings. I really would love to have seen you become the Director of the URA, although we have a great Director. But I think that I see your work impacting the City of Pittsburgh in areas I've never seen benefiting from development. And it's just, and just your understanding of the communities is just so amazing, and your willingness to work and roll up your sleeves and get things done. And I just want to thank you because you've really helped us a lot with the Porter project. You're helping us a lot with that, even though I get so tense about that project. I don't want anything to happen that that doesn't come through.
I'm on it. I'm personally on it.
You know what? Wait till you hear what's coming. They have an announcement coming up pretty soon, so I'm going to say. And I'll call you after. It's so exciting. And I just think that that project is going to really help. They're actually just posted, they're doing interviews this week. They're going to hire 200 people from the community. So-
That's amazing.
Yeah. And so they're doing the interviews this week. So to me, Chrissy Porter is amazing. She's just steamrolling. She's going forward, and she's getting to get this place open. And it's going to benefit the community in so many ways, but especially with employment and services. So I'm excited. So thank you for your help with that. But I just want to say your help with the land bank and all sorts of things. You're just so easy to work with, so easy to talk to, and so knowledgeable in all these areas. It's just, I really appreciate having you here. And I think the mayor did a great job in hiring you. He's doing a great job appointing you and using you in different places to really impact the city in ways that he really intends. So, but I want to say, even though the fact that you've not worked for the city, I've never seen anybody sit on the board that works for the city that's so free to say whatever she wants to say. And I love that. I love that you're going to give your real opinion, and you're going to say whatever you think is really needs to be done. So I want to tell you, I know that's a difficult situation because I've done it myself before in other areas, but it's, I appreciate that you're so willing to put yourself out there and stand by your convictions. So I want to thank you for that as well.
Thank you, Council.
Because I'm usually hesitant when I hear somebody's going to be pointed from an administration or council or something because I'm thinking, ah, they're not going to say what really needs to be done or whatever.
I don't know any other way to do it.
I love it. I love that about you. I love that about you. So I think this will be up for vote next week, and I'm sure everybody's going to be so eager to give affirmative recommendation to your appointment. And so that's, I think that's it for me. I just wanted to talk about you as a person and how great you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
And appreciate your work across the city. That's it for me. So now we're just going to wait for Councilman Lavelle to start the 10 o'clock meeting, which has about 10 minutes to go. So we're just going to stay longed on council members, and we'll wait for Councilman Lavelle to start that meeting. But thank you, De'Monte. You're, you know, welcome to sign off or stick around for our meeting if you'd like.
All right. No, I'll leave here, but thank you very much. I appreciate all that you guys are doing on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh and all the wonderful legislation around equity inequality that's been coming out of council. Very much appreciated, and it's definitely helping the work at the URA. So-
Thanks, De'Monte.
Bye.
Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee Meeting for Wednesday, July 15, 2020. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will stream live on the city's YouTube channel. Our first order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state or maybe before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. Our first registered speaker is Les Ludwig. Is Mr. Ludwig on the line?
Yes, I am. This is Les Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15217. At 88, almost 88 years of age, I find myself having to come forward because no one's calling out the man. No one's calling out the President of the United States because of his position, and he gets away with bloody murder of the English language and lies. So I'm going to do it. There's two words that I want to speak about. One is "I." I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I. We're all I's. We're not white I's. We're not brown I's. We're not black I's. We're not blue I's. We have to forget the issue of color and go on to a greater country. We made our mistakes. It's time to correct them. It's time to give the minority populations their place in the sun. And they're absolutely right in what they're saying, and I saw it way back when I got married and the next day, back in the 50s, I ended up with what? Going to see somebody to say goodbye because we were going on a road trip. And what did I see? An African American who came out and mouthed off to his boss, and the boss picked him up and threw him like a piece of garbage off of a four-foot dock, and that was the start of it. I've been on your side ever since. What about all? With liberty and justice for all. It doesn't say for all white. It doesn't say for all blue or black. It says for all of us, Jewish, Catholic, whatever we believe in, but it's liberty and justice for all. And then we go to another little piece of writing. "We, the people, in order to form a more perfect union." Nobody said that we're finished with the task. We've got a lot of work to do.
30 seconds.
And we can't do it with a president like this one, who wants to divide us. And watch out for the next peculiar coincidence, because he'll do anything to stay in power. Like, say that there's a vaccine when there isn't one in order to confuse us. And I'm sure he has a couple more backup ones.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shaman Poma.
Greetings, everyone. Greetings. You did so much better this time. It is Shaman, just the correct pronunciation. Poma, you got it dead on. Thank you for that. So again, I am here to speak for the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American Peoples. And following what this man has said just gives more clarity, and it gives more of a foundation. It puts things into a clearer perspective for everyone here that when we are talking about the injustices, no one can talk about the injustices until they start to begin to address the injustices of the Aboriginal people that were here on these lands that we call America, that you call America, and that you call the United States of America, of, meaning being the specific point here, of America. We are the original Aboriginal American people. We are the foundation. Our roads were laid already. Our paths were already put in place. We had streets. We had areas of peace, and we had monumental places that were our sacred burial grounds and our sacred spaces where we would gather for our powwows, where the now-called Native Americans are not us, where we are not Title 25 Native American Indians. We are the Aboriginal, the Iroquois, who have the government-to-government relationship. Specifically, we are the only one out of all of the people who are claiming to be us that have this special relationship, and it has been ignored. And our time for us to be acknowledged as we are by Congress is time for us to be acknowledged by City Council, by the mayor's office, by the state representatives, by the governors, by the senators. And this is what is happening today all across the country. This is a silent thing that media gives no attention to, but we're here giving attention to it. And you will give attention to this. You will give attention to us because we are a peaceful people, and we have helped set the foundation that all immigrants enjoy, all immigrants, you yourselves, descendants thereof, or descendants of those who are saying they came here through a slave trade. We were here before that happened. We are saying to you and to all of the people, as we are rising and waking our own people up to their true identity after the genocide, after the mislabeling of our people from colored Negro, Black, African American, even till today. I am not African. My grandmothers on both sides of my families were not African. They told us the stories of the atrocities. We have kept our records. We have been silent, and we are silent no more. We have been muffled because if we say that we are Aboriginal- We have been muffled because if we say that we are Aboriginal, if we say that we are the Aboriginal Indian people, American Indian people, then we get scoffed at. We get ridiculed. We get told by the color of our skin and the complexion of our body and the hair and the texture of our feet.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Audrey Moran.
Hello?
Yes, you may begin.
Uh, okay, um, um, uh, where should I start at? Um, I've been having problems with Pittsburgh police. Um, I'm gonna make this long story short. I ran it off a police chief in West Holstet, two thousand and ten. Um, the man was acting very strange. Anyway, he followed, he would follow me around um, on all kind of different uh, occasions. Um, from that point on anyway, he's putting my name in the system. It's hard for me to get housing. Everywhere I go, they follow me. Um, you know, I have some footage, some videos of them follow me. Um, you know, and I'm just, I just need somebody to help me with this. I went to the N W, uh, N W A C P. They advised me to get some proof. Um, I got some proof, but then they acted ignorant towards me. You know, I really need some help on this. I need somebody to help me with this because they're really harassing me. They're getting uh, neighbors after me to try to, you know, do bodily, physical harm to me. You know, to orchestrate and all kind of arguments uh, with different people to having me followed. And it's just, it's, it's been going on for ten years and I can't seem to get no help. You know, when I tell people this, they say, oh, no, you're paranoid, you're crazy. I'm not crazy, I'm not paranoid. This is really going on and I need something to be done before something happens. So that's really what I wanted to speak about. Hello? Wait a minute. Hello? This is what I'm talking about. See? They didn't block that out.
We're, we're here, Ms. Moran, but this is not a conversation.
Okay, nobody said nothing. I said, okay, they did another number on me. Because every time I would make a call out to get a lawyer or something, they would block my phone. They, they're doing all this. So and is there any way I can get some assistance, some help with this?
If you put your information in the chat, then someone may be able to reach out to you and or leave your information with the city clerk's office.
Okay, how do I do that again?
Uh, four, one, two, two, five, five.
Twenty-one thirty-eight.
Twenty-one thirty-eight is the number to call.
Okay, what do I do again?
Just leave your information.
Are they gonna help me?
We, we will see. All right, thank you. Um, our next speaker is Beth Rupert. Is Beth Rupert with us?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good morning, Council, Beth Rupert, one eight six Home Street. By not bringing our home back to the table and voting today, you are casting your yes vote for the historical nomination of our house. Stand up and fight for this injustice versus hiding behind a loophole in the law. By not voting or voting yes to the first vote, you are acknowledging the laws of the law. One, you are voting to honor a racist slave owner who was also a prop cop. Where you are tearing down bronze statues of other slave owners, you will be erecting a bronze plaque in Samuel E. Walts' honor. Reverend Burgess, you spoke so eloquently yesterday about how change is hard to take against the black community. Yet you are going to vote to honor a man that took away black people's freedom for his own gain? The nomination of this house is a slap in the B L N's face as this house is being saved for historical status and funding money. Two, you are voting on the side of anti-development and the poorly written laws. Judge James's ruling confirms that the Lawrenceville stakeholders were agreeable to the house being torn down for three townhomes. When they lost in zoning court is when they filed this historical nomination. You are setting up precedents that will permit nonprofits to halt development at the detriment of the city. Lawrenceville used to be a rundown, poor neighborhood and now is flourishing all due, due to developers who have invested millions. Now you're funneling much-needed money revitalizing black neighborhoods. I wonder how many good, hard-working black families will have their homes unjustly taken off of them for this structural or white laws? These laws are unconstitutional and need change. Bernie, you are voting to ignore a sealed structural engineers' report that deems this house dangerous and not worthy of preservation. Even based on the P L I's response, they concur that this house has structural defects and can possibly fall down. Yet you're ignoring this danger to the community. When this house falls, I put the city on notice. That is your liability as we try to do the right thing to demolish. Four, you are voting to not want to bring in much-needed revenue for the city. Whereas you are laying off hundreds of hard-working Pittsburghers who could use this tax revenue to save jobs. Five, you are voting to uphold a flawed law that takes away an inheritance from a family and puts it into financial ruin. This is not a commercial property where we are investors making millions of dollars. We are a family that has tried to do the right thing. Now that we have lost in zoning court, we have no sales agreement. This was never about money. The house still needs to come down due to all these reasons stated above. Reverend Burgess, yesterday you stated you are not a coward and you don't hide behind anything. But publicly outspoken that you're against the unjust taking of property without just compensation. Don't be a coward today and put this vote back on the table. Stand up for our families. Stand up for the black community. Stand up for what's right. Thank you and thank you for your consideration. I wish you well.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Joyce.
Thirty-plus. Bill Joyce, one seven, one forty-fourth street, thirty-plus-year Lawrenceville resident. I'm an architect with considerable experience with the adaptive use of historic buildings, including several national registered properties. I strongly support the Ewald House historic nomination and continued to be troubled by the inaccurate and disingenuous statements made by the Rupert's and the representatives. Yet, at yesterday's seven fourteen twenty council meeting, Ms. Rupert introduced herself using one eighty-six Home Street, Lawrenceville as her address. One eighty-six Home Street is the address of the Ewald House. Ms. Rupert does not live there. Ms. Rupert is not a city resident. She has no interest in Lawrenceville or quality, quality of life issues affecting Lawrenceville. As you know, Judge James appropriately reversed the numerous variances granted by the zoning board that would, would have permitted the developer to shoehorn five poorly-designed townhouses with garages on the front facade onto this site. The Lawrenceville stakeholders, stakeholders never stated the Ewald House should be torn down. The historic issues were deemed not relevant and I believe were not admissible to the zoning appeal process. Just, Ju, Judge James should be commended and the zoning board admonished. The zoning board consistently grants variances that have a negative impact on, on our city neighborhoods, particularly Lawrenceville. Ms. Rupert and her attorney continue to make statements to the effect that the Ewald House is unsafe, dangerous, and falling down. I believe David Green, a fellow architect and the city's Assistant Director of Construction agrees with me as he has stated that the Ewald House does not pose an imminent danger to the public. Yesterday's meeting, the Rupert's attorney suggested it was the Lawrenceville stakeholders who said that the Ewald House only needs some T L C. That language comes directly from the Rupert's own original Zillow description of the Ewald House. And I quote, "full of historic details. We inhabit back to a spectacular, spectacular historic mansion. Structurally sound, just needs some T L C. Dump this out on this one-of-a-kind estate." I urge council to listen to Lawrenceville residents and neighborhood organizations. Listen to preservation Pittsburgh. Listen to the historic preservation experts. Listen to the Historic Review Commission. Listen to city planning. Support the Ewald House nomination on behalf of the next generation of Lawrenceville residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Axtell.
Thank you. My name is John Axtell. I live in Friendship. I moved to Lawrenceville in nineteen eighty-two. I purchased and restored a house on Main Street in nineteen eighty-five, which I still own. I've been active with Lawrenceville revitalization and preservation efforts continuously for close to forty years. I am in speaking in support of the nomination of the Ewald House as a city historic site. I wish to address some of the assertions made by the property owners and the proposed developers. Our opponent's assertion that the stakeholders attorney's use of a hypothetical build-out in the course of last fall's zoning hearing for the property, uh, that indicates support for demolition of the Ewald House uh, is a false and misleading characterization of neighbors and their lawyer in opposing the developers' request for zoning variances. The issue of historic preservation was not before the zoning board. Knowledgeable real estate professionals and their attorneys should know this. To suggest otherwise is to traffic in misinformation taken out of context. Such statements call into question the credibility of other assertions made by the owner and developers of the Ewald House. We should expect both public officials and our neighbors to abide by the law. Pittsburgh's preservation law provides for the protection of buildings of extraordinary significance. Uh, in the expert judgment of both the Pittsburgh Historic Review Commission and the Planning Commission, the Ewald House merits the criteria of extraordinary significance set forth in the preservation ordinance. The current owners of the Ewald House apparently had the good fortune to receive a financial windfall. They inherited a sizable investment property, which is not the home they live in, in Lawrenceville, a neighborhood undergoing a dramatic economic boom. The issue here is not whether the property owners will lose money, it's how much profit they will make. If the owners and their proposed buyers have made risky choices to request development variances that exceed the legal zoning standards or to make financial commitments contingent on a deal that has not yet received the needed public permits, it should not be the responsibility of other neighbors or public officials to remedy such risky choices on the part of a commercial, property owner, or developer. I urge council members to check the current state of the law on the preservation ordinance. Uh, neither newspaper reports nor the owner's statements accurately, accurately reflect the uh, ef, effect on the property of the current hold on the nomination. Uh, this is not a draconian measure. It leaves the owner in the same situation as other law-abiding Pittsburgh property owners. We urge the owners to use conventional marketing for the property uh, should the current development deal fall through as a result of the court decision. The Lawrenceville real estate market will bring them a willing buyer at a fair price if listed by professional real estate agents. Trying to see a uh, pro, trying to sell a property by oneself is no test to the market. I urge the council to support the nomination of this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Van Istendale.
Hello, my name is Eric Van Istendale. I'm a resident of the sixth ward of uh, Lawrenceville. And I am a community development professional, uh, proponent of adaptive reuse and preservation of historic structures. And I'm basically in support of the historic domination, nomination, Ewald House. Um, in addition to all of the other things that other, other people have mentioned in terms of it being an investment property that has been neglected for years, that was inherited, um, I want to basically touch upon the idea of value in the real estate market. So the price that is expected and is fundamentally the argument for why this historic nomination should not be seen through is that the current sellers of the property expect a financial windfall based on a theoretical scenario of market rate development. So every zoning variance hearing and argument has been to support the demolition of a structurally-sound, historical-significant building to fund and build five high-density luxury townhomes that are not legal per zoning law and are frankly not the kind of structures that we need in Lawrenceville anymore. Second part of that is the Lawrenceville Inclusionary Zoning and Affordable Housing overlay does not apply to this development. So again, it will be purely a financial windfall for the sellers at inflated price, the developers, and the end affluent buyers. And in addition to the fact that Lawrenceville, as a changing community, has been reinvested in, we are also in a situation where it has lost a lot of its historic character and the residents who used to call it home. And for various reasons have not been able to participate in the revitalization of the neighborhood. I'm confident that after being designated as a local historic landmark, in addition to the fact that Lawrenceville itself is a national historic district, the property will sell for a fair price that reflects its current condition and the decades of neglect by the owners. And in addition to that designation, potential historic tax credits and other forms of subsidies such as the Pennsylvania Neighborhood Assistance Program, perhaps grants and loans sourced from the U R A and other local entities could feasibly restore this building to its former glory and have a productive and positive effect on the community moving forward. As a resident of Lawrenceville, I believe that the entire community's needs and wants should be addressed, not just one person's. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmen Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I was, I, I wanted to uh, make a comment on the uh, bill zero four, four, seven. Okay, so I understand that, you know, that they're gonna try to expand on and they're gonna put some new language into the Home Rule Charter. My, my, my statement is that Councilman Burgess should not be sponsoring this bill. First and foremost, he doesn't even believe in the Home Rule Charter. He has, he has violated his oath with the Home Rule Charter. So he has a lot of nerve to be sponsoring the bill. He doesn't even believe in the Home Rule Charter. We're going to court right now about his violations, violations of the Home Rule Charter. So he has a lot of nerve to try to make it look like he's so, uh, that he really cares about, again, black people because he doesn't, okay? This is, this, like I said, this is another exploitation of black people. This is what he's doing. And you have the nerve, Councilman Burgess, to, to sponsor a bill in the name of the Home Rule Charter. You don't even believe in the Home Rule Charter. You have violated the Home Rule Charter. And we're gonna be, and we're gonna, and I'm gonna prove it when we go to trial. We're moving on to trial now. But you got a lot of nerve when you do not believe in the Home Rule Charter. You have, like, again, you have violated your oath. Yes, you did. And now you want to sponsor and you want to implement something and you want to insert something in the Home Rule Charter that you don't even believe in. That's it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Casey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Correct. My name is Robert Casey. I'm a resident of the tenth ward. And I'm calling today in regards to the multiple sewage facility planning modules that have been passed and delayed multiple times by council. Councilman Gross stated yesterday that her staff has been tracking and checking the status of the projects that are requesting sewage facilities planning, planning module approvals on one stop. If this is true, then they should be aware that the Thirty-Ninth Street, Fifty-Second Street, and Duncan Street projects all have their zoning and P L I approvals and their building permits have been issued. The only outstanding permit that these projects need to complete construction is the P W S A tap-in permit. However, P W S A cannot issue the tap-in permit without the sewage facilities planning module approval by the Department of Environmental Protection. And the D E P cannot approve the sewage facilities pla, planning module until city council approves. These, these planning modules have already been reviewed and approved by P W S A, Alka-San, and Allegheny County Health Department. P W S A reviews the planning module to confirm that their sewer infrastructure has capacity to convey the development flows to Alka-San and Alka-San confirms that they can treat the sewage they receive. We are all aware of the many issues P W S A and the city of Pittsburgh face with replacing degrading sewer infrastructure and, and lead water lines. New development in the city of Pittsburgh is, is helping correct these issues in many different ways. First, they are providing additional funds to increase tap-in fees and water bills to help pay for improvements. Second, developers are required to cap existing open sewer lateral lines along Second, developers are required to cap existing open sewer lateral lines along with their developments to prevent groundwater from entering the sewer lines and reducing their capacity. Third, new developments are required to provide onsite stormwater management, which separate from the sanitary sewer that is being treated by Alka-Sand and would provide Alka-Sand with more treatment capacity. Also, new developments are required to provide onsite stormwater management, reduce the stormwater flow and PWSA's pipes and treatment by Alka-Sand. These projects followed all the required city planning and PLI approval procedures and were issued building permits. Please reinstate the bills and approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next and final speaker is Matt Stuckey. Is Mr. Stuckey with us? I do not see him on the call. Therefore, we have exhausted our speakers for the day. And we will now move on to our standing committee agenda, and would a clerk please take the role?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Chicago. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle, Chair.
Here.
And members.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law. I'm chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 447.
Bill 447, ordinance directing the Allegheny County Board of Elections to place before the qualified boroughs of the city at the 2020 November general election referendum question. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article II Executive, be amended and supplemented by amending the language and adding new language to Sections 229 and 230 to expand the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to allow the Board to carry out its original mandate to investigate police misconduct and improve police-community relations?
Motion to approve with brief discussion.
Second.
First of all, I would like to thank Public Safety Director Hisrich and Chief Schubert, who we've met with. I want to thank their using of Kelly Mystic and the Law Department. I want to thank Beth Pittenger and her solicitor, Mr. Bill Ward, for their input. And so, over the last two weeks, or week or so, we have hopefully built this three-legged stool. We have gotten input from the Public Safety Director and from Chief of Police, so that he was comfortable. We've got input from Beth Pittenger and Bill Ward, so that they were comfortable, and now we are ready to move on. And so, the amended, I sent it out last night, the amended version of the ballot question is in your inbox, and so I intend to motion, I guess, motion to substitute by amendment.
Second.
Any discussion on amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The bill is amended.
So, John is on the line. He is the architect of putting all this together. I see Beth is on the line, and so I just, I thank council for its support. I think that, you know, we've come to a piece of legislation that will do what we want, strengthen the Civilian Police Review Board, not have unintended consequences, and also something that can be supported by the Public Safety Director, the Chief of Police, that we all of us have come, I think, to an agreement of moving forward. And I want to thank council in advance for their support.
Councilman Lavelle?
Yes.
Yeah. Hey Rev, just wanted to say, is, so you're, are you saying Chief Schubert and Director Hisrich support this?
Yes.
Okay. Good enough.
Councilman, I have my hand up as well.
Thank you. Councilman Cross?
Yeah, thank you. May I ask Beth Pittenger to come on? I know she's here, and I think Bill Ward might be here as well, too. Good morning, Director.
Good morning, Council.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm well, thank you.
So, I would just like to talk to you briefly about this. I know you and I have spoken at length. I just want to thank you for your due diligence and your work to make certain that what the council does ultimately approve here really does help and support the work of the Citizens' Police Review Board. I know you have entered into extensive discussions with the councilmen, with the Public Safety Department, with your own solicitor. And just for, matter of the record, I would just like to have you say that you have come into agreement that you support the bill as written now and that it does indeed assist you in doing the work that you are charged to do.
Yes, Councilman, it does. We were able to work with Mr. Carter on behalf of Reverend Burgess and our Board Chairperson, Dr. Emma Lucas Darby, and our Solicitor, Bill Ward, who's with us this morning. And we were able to work through some of the details that were kind of confusing to the mission of the Board, but it's all been resolved and we're quite comfortable with the language as proposed now.
Great. I just want to thank you, everyone, for being as open-minded and engaged in working towards the greater good, and I'm happy to support the bill as written today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members?
Mr. Chair. Thank you. So, our vote on this bill puts that exact language onto the November ballot. I just want to make sure I'm getting, you know, I and the public understand everything we're doing. So, I know that there are concurrent efforts around Citizens' Police Review Boards that are also happening at the county level, and Ms. Pittenger, you testified this week to Allegheny County Council. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, can you speak to us and city residents for a minute about how you see these two efforts? The change in our Home Rule Charter to add this language for the city CPRB and the county efforts? Do they, are they complementary? Are they irrelevant to each other? Just, I think it's important to speak to that for one minute, and then I'll have some follow-up questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman. My conversation with county councils has been ongoing for a couple of years now since they started to look into the feasibility of conducting some form of civilian oversight. But we have a very real problem because we have 108 independent police departments in the city, in the county, rather, and so there's a tremendous communication gap. So to achieve some sense of oversight that they're looking for, I recommend it to them that they consider the model known as an ombudsman, which is essentially a public advocate. And that public advocate would serve as liaison between an individual who's aggrieved by some action of a police officer in whatever municipality it may be, but that public advocate, the ombudsman, would then serve as the liaison to the local municipality. Because as you all know well, municipalities in Pennsylvania are established with certain autonomy and self-determination. The electeds are responsible for the quality of policing in their municipality. So you have that local control. Policing is a local issue. So what an ombudsman can do is facilitate the communication toward a resolution, but the ultimate disposition of a complaint would be in the hands of the local elected officials. Now, I recommend it that they consider encouragement of development of small panels in each of those municipalities. It would be a municipal decision. County cannot direct any police department to do anything except for Allegheny County PD. And so, the locals would have the option of resolving complaints at their, whatever model they want to use, but the advocate, the ombudsman, would not go away until it was resolved in a reasonable fashion. And that ombudsman then would return with a report on a regular basis to the public as to the number of complaints, how they were resolved, et cetera. The county also wants...
I think I'm interested in the aspect of how it is either relates to the city CPRB function or does not relate or is complementary or not complementary to. So if we can...
It does not. It does not have anything to do with the city's...
And can you explain why?
Because the city is independent of county when it comes to a policing issue, and the Board exists through the Home Rule Charter, which is the governing document for the city of Pittsburgh, separate from the Board.
But again, for the public, the city is in the county, just as the other 108 police departments are.
Right.
And is it because we are, because we have, I'm assuming, language in our Home Rule Charter, it is not superseded by the counties?
That is correct, Councilwoman.
I just wanted to kind of get, make sure that people understand, because there's a lot of interest in these topics, and we want to make sure that people understand. We've had our Citizens' Police Review Board remind us all for how many, for how long now?
23 years.
23 years, thank you. And, but since these conversations are ongoing, and since there is so much community interest, I have a technical question. Maybe Mr. Carter would be the most expert person we have on the call and Mr. Burgess himself, because we're, as the councils, is different than last year's referendum, which was put on by petition. In this action, where the City Council of Pittsburgh is putting the language on the November ballot. So, what if we, in a month, decide that we want to change the language?
So, I can answer that question.
Thank you.
First of all, this is an inherent power that council has. We did this, I think you were, I'm not sure if you were a council, I think you were a member of council when we put on the ballot question of whether police should live. You may not have been. So we've done this before when we put on the question as to whether police can live in the city. So we put that, the same process, is council's rights. In the past, when the Civilian Review Board was first established, the reason it went through the ballot signature is because city council refused to put it on the ballot. And so, that's so they had to go through signatures. And Sean gave me the date, but we can only change the section of the Home Rule Charter every, is it seven years, Sean? What's the number?
Five.
Five years. So after, we cannot change, we can only change a section...
My question is slightly different, though. What if, you know, my question is slightly different.
Sure.
So yes, council has the power to do this and has exercised it previously, but what if, since there's really very active public conversation, we as a body decide that we want a slightly different language on the November ballot?
We can't. Oh, Sean, here, Sean?
Whether it's voter-initiated vis-à-vis petition signatures, or whether it's an ordinance of council vis-à-vis the process that's before you today, once the filing deadline has passed, there can be no changes to the language presented to the voters.
I know this is a very, very specific question, so thank you for speaking to it. And the filing deadline is when?
Tuesday, August the 4th.
Okay, and so basically, we only have between now and the end of recess, but let's say we pass it final Tuesday, and then even just the next Tuesday, we decide we want to make a change. What happens?
That depends on if those changes can be made and agreed to by the mayor, who has to sign them prior to the filing deadline.
Does it come back to council?
No, if council passes finally and the mayor signs it, and council decides that it wants to do some, make some change...
We could create a new bill quickly.
You have to do a motion. I don't think you can get it through quite that quickly, but you could probably reconsider the prior adoption, provided you can accomplish that before the filing deadline.
No, this is, it's just a hypothetical, but thank you for indulging me, because again, there's just, I think, so much. This is relatively quickly, I think, in the kind of community conversation, since, like I said, there's so many different conversations going on about police oversight. So, I just, I just wanted to kind of get that technicalities clarified. I appreciate it. I have no more questions.
Thank you. Any further discussion from members? Councilman Wilson? You're on mute, Councilman.
All right, thanks. Sorry, I had a sticky key there. So, I want to ask a question about this being put on the ballot. So the language, the question that I see, there is a lot more, you know, when you click on the text that would be added to our charter. And so, just like the parks text, that's already added to our Home Rule Charter. And I was just curious, you know, when I look at that, where that's added already, that text comes strictly from the question that the voters, that they saw on that day. And I was just wondering, like, how the voters would understand what they would be voting for if they don't see all the text when they're voting.
Sean?
This legislation, Councilman Wilson, that, thank you for the question. This legislation will require that every registered elector in the city, regardless of party, be sent a summary of the charter amendment approved by council. That is, that council will have to agree what the summary should say prior to it being sent, then it will be sent within 30 days of the election to every registered elector in the city, so that they can see the entire question and council's explanation of what it will do. Okay, that clarifies it. So be sent to all registered voters? Yes. Okay. And, I mean, we could talk about that timeline, but thanks for clarifying that. I didn't realize that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members for first round? Seeing none, second round, Councilman Cross?
Thank you. That was similar to a question I was going to pose myself, but I think what would be helpful is if, I don't know if it's Director Pittenger or Sean or Councilman Burgess could actually read the language that will appear on the ballot that people will see. And then question number two, incurring the cost of the mailing to every registered voter in the city of Pittsburgh, does it fall under the cost of the city because we're approving this, or is it the County Board of Elections that would assume that cost? Thank you. Okay, the question, to answer your first question, if the amended language passes, the question that will be presented to the voters at the ballot will be the following. Shall the Pittsburgh Home Rule Charter, Article II Executive, be amended and supplemented by amending the language and adding new language to Sections 229 and 230, and by adding a new section, Section 231, to expand the powers of the Independent Citizen Police Review Board to allow the Board to carry out its mandate to investigate police misconduct and improve police-community relations? So that is the question that will appear on the ballot, because we are limited by law to 75 words. That's all they can fit on the ballot, which is why Reverend Burgess wanted to ensure that there was a summary sent to all voters so that they could see the entire change to the charter and have council's explanation of what it is. Now, I believe council will most likely work with the Citizens' Police Review Board and probably the Law Department to make sure that it's clear, it's legal, and accurate, that summary that is sent to the voters. I can't speak for you guys. That's a process the council will have to engage in. The only thing the ordinance requires is that that be sent out within 30 days of the general election, so that would be October the 4th. So, Madam Clerk, you have experience in election procedure. Can you speculate if that is a cost that's incurred then by the city to do the mailing, or does that fall under the Board of Elections? It's just, I just would like to know, that's all.
I think that would be a cost that the city would have to bear. More specifically, probably the city clerk's office would probably have to bear the expense of that cost.
Thank you. And Director Pittenger, the language on the referendum itself, as written by, or as just read by Sean Carter, is perfectly in keeping with your mission and your desire to see this move forward.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further speakers, second round?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, one more thing. Madam Clerk, could you also check the Legistar link? So after Councilman Wilson's question, I wanted to look at the full text, and it, I...
And it, I only see the summary, and the link doesn't seem to be loading anything. And the agenda that we sent isn't the full packet when you all, for me, maybe I've opened the wrong link in my email. I think when you guys send us an email with the full, I don't.
Yeah.
Package.
Mike Wentz should send an email. I see the email that he sent with a full text file, but I think we have an amendment by substitution, right? So there should be.
That's true.
Yeah, so we got a total, so it's not going to be the information that you're looking for right now, probably not be in that text.
And maybe that's why the Legistar text file is empty.
Yeah, we just, we just amended it.
Okay, so yeah, so that's very, very quick.
And I'll resend that, I'll resend that to you if you like.
That's okay. I also want to make sure that the public, because they don't have the PDF in the email, you know, as the public, so they need to see the full text on.
We'll upload it as soon as we get this vote.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Director Pittinger and everyone involved for producing this document. So thank you for all your work. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The bill is recommended. That takes us to new papers, Bill 483.
Bill 483, Resolution Approving a Fee Schedule Presented by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure for Use in the City's Permitting and Agreements Involving Small Sale Facilities.
Motion to approve, brief discussion.
Need a second. Thank you.
Is the director with us this morning?
I believe she is. I saw her.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, Director, good morning. Would you, would you please brief the council on 483?
So this is the reintroduction, is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, I believe we recommitted.
Recommit, sorry. So this just addresses some preferred language. Oh, sorry. This just, thank you. This just addresses some preferred language that the industry provided to us. We did, upon submission of the legislation to council for its introduction at last week's meeting, the industry then provided to us some preferred language that is more in keeping with the terminology that they use. And so we made that adjustment, basically, to to clean it up, so that there's less confusion between the industry and the city as to what the legislation is providing for.
Great, thank you, Director.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 506.
Bill 506, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with B.J. Kapoor, the Kapoor Company for Professional Services in Connection with FOP Interest Arbitration in an Amount Not to Exceed $35,000.
Need motion?
Motion to approve. Our second is law available, or are they coming to speak to the finance bills? Just curious.
I'm looking, but I Von Hilton is on, I believe, and Director and Wendy Toby is with.
Yeah, Wendy and see Matt Spiegel as well.
Okay. I don't have any questions on this one, thank you.
Okay. Any other members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 507.
Bill 507, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Howard J. Woods, Jr. and Associates for Professional Services in Connection with PUC Litigation and Related Matters in an Amount Not to Exceed $50,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 508.
Bill 508, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 829, which authorized the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Campbell Durant, P.C., for professional legal services and expert advice regarding labor matters by increasing the total cost to $35,000 from $305,000 to $340,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 509.
Bill 509, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Kurtner and Hefner in an Amount Not to Exceed $11,864.05 for Professional Legal Services and Expert Advice Regarding Source of Income Litigation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 510.
Bill 510, Resolution Amending Resolution 587, authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with Fox Rothschilds, L.L.P., for professional consulting and legal services in relation to False Claims Act litigation by increasing the total cost $45,000 from $235,000 to $280,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 511.
Bill 511, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Coheen Law Group to address a matter pending telecommunications and cable regulatory litigation at an amount not to exceed $29,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 512.
Bill 512, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Jones, Posol, List, for Professional Legal Services for an Employment-Related Matter Before the Human Relations Commission for an Amount Not to Exceed $24,000.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
May I have law table, please? Whether Solicitor or or Solicitor Kobe, whoever wishes to take it?
Sister Hilton?
Anthony Bylin for City Department of Law.
Hi, Anthony, is the Solicitor still on the line? Yes, she is. Hi, Solicitor Hilton, how are you?
Fine, thanks, Councilman, how are you?
Good morning. Thank you. Can you explain, please, the purpose of Bill 512?
So this is a professional services agreement with respect to a matter where the city law department is defending a matter before the Human Relations Commission, and we have hired outside counsel to represent one of the other parties to talk further about the details we would need in an executive session.
So does this matter of employment or this employment-related matter refer to a complaint filed with the Human Relations Commission by a city employee alleging workplace intimidation and harassment by a member of city council?
I can't confirm the details of the complaint outside of an executive session, but it does involve a complaint before the Human Relations Commission.
This did not come to council with a request for executive session? Is there a reason why this did not come to council with a request to go into executive session?
I apologize, Councilman, we did have a number of resolutions for approval, and I apologize, it 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 should have, to the extent the council wants to discuss more details regarding the matter, and that was my error.
Alleging intimidation and harassment by a member of city council toward a city employee is an incredibly serious matter. Can you please tell me whose legal fees the up to $24,000 allotment would be paying for?
Councilman, I'm not the attorney handling the case directly. Again, this would be more appropriate in an executive session. I can say that the legal defense fees being paid are done pursuant to the applicable provision of the Political Subdivision Court Claims Act, which requires defense, not necessarily indemnification, but defense under certain circumstances. And we can go more into that in an executive session.
Has counsel, outside counsel been provided by Jones, Posedalas, before bringing the matter to council for approval?
So again, I'm not sure how much involvement the firm has had up to this point. I believe there was a prior counsel who was going to handle the matter and then had another conflict, so we are trying to catch up.
Is it a matter of norm for us to go to outside legal counsel on employment matters and not house those within our own law department?
Councilman, again, if we can discuss more about the the reasons behind the potential conflict in an executive session, please.
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
Madam Clerk, do we need a roll call on executive session, or is a voice vote good?
Ask me that question again, I just.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, is it a matter of a roll call to enter into executive session in reference to Bill 512, or is a voice vote sufficient?
You would probably need a roll call vote.
I think, do we have discussion on the motion with Councilwoman Gross?
Discussion. And I'll get to you, Councilwoman Gross, I apologize. I just, I guess I have a technical question. Given we are live on Zoom, how do we, can can we go into a breakout room? Because we would need, we would, members would need to go into a breakout room and then come back.
But Mr. Chair, if if I may, my preference would be, being that the law department does not feel qualified to be briefed in a in a competent way to speak to the bill that we schedule executive session. So I'd be happy. Yeah, I would be happy then to change my motion to schedule executive session on Bill 12, and we could do that with voice vote?
Yes.
Do you need to withdraw your earlier motion technically?
Withdrawn.
I have a question.
Who had the, who made the second for the?
I did.
Anthony.
Just say withdraw, my second.
Withdraw my second.
Thank you. Can you make a new motion, Councilman Cross?
Yes, motion to enter into schedule, entering into executive session as it relates to Bill 512.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Madam President?
Thank you. I just want to know, we looking at any kind of timeframe here, if we had scheduled executive session, or should we recess this meeting? I want to make sure that we're okay with a timeframe.
I believe we're, Clerk can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we can bring this back for next week's meeting, and then it would still have time to be passed the following week.
Yeah, okay, just make sure. Thanks.
Okay. Any other members? All those in favor of holding this for an executive session, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Stay.
One abstention. Bill will be held for, Bill 512 will be held for executive session. Thank you.
Thank you all.
That takes us to Bill 513.
Bill 513, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Cosin O'Connor for Professional Legal Services in Connection with an Employment-Related Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $15,000.
A motion to approve.
Need a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to invoices. Need a motion to approve the invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. That'll take us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. We have a recommit, recommitted paper, excuse me, Bill 484.
Bill 484, Ordinance Amendment Title for Public Places and Property, Article Two, Telecommunications, Chapter 427, Telecommunication Systems in the Right-of-Way Section 42703, Definitions in 42711, Consideration for R.O.W. Use Agreement to Provide for Updated Definitions and Free and Fee Structure for Wireless Small Sale Facilities.
Anthony?
A motion to approve.
Second, with discussion, if we may have the director back, please.
Discussion. Do you, I believe we have an amendment about substitution. Do you want to discuss the bill first, or you want to amend it?
No, thanks, Mr. Chair, let's amend first.
Okay. Have motion?
Motion to amend substitution.
And I'll second it, Councilman.
Thank you. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is now amended. We can now have discussion on the amended bill. Councilman Cross?
Good morning, Anne Director, thank you for being here. Would you brief the council, please, on 484?
Yes, I immediately realized my mistake. So the earlier bill that you approved actually sets the fee. That was in the finance group, and that is the proposed fee structure. This bill is the bill that allows us to engage in right-of-way use agreements using that fee structure. So this is the one that was recommitted just in response to the industry's desire for different terminology, so that it can be consistent with their common industry language as well, and for certain clarifications.
And you're comfortable with this coming back to council with the language as revised?
Yeah, we've reviewed it, and we we concur, we didn't accept all of their recommended changes, but we accepted the ones that we felt did a good service to moving this forward, so that we can engage in those right-of-way agreements.
Thanks, Director. Good.
Thank you. Councilman O'Connor?
Yeah, briefly, I know, Director, we talked about this bill last week, and you, and maybe somebody can just get me the final numbers. You had mentioned that Philly pays a couple thousand per poll, or they're, they get paid that amount. Now, to my knowledge, that was prior to the FCC ruling. Chicago used to pay a couple thousand, and now they pay a couple hundred. And I don't really need a response. If somebody could just email me what those cities pay now, that would be very helpful for final vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson, followed by Councilwoman Gross?
I don't have any, any questions.
Sorry, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. I just wanted to reemphasize that Councilman O'Connor corrected himself, those cities receive, right, $1,000 per poll. There, as we're anticipating, as we mentioned last week, we're anticipating there may be several thousand polls in Pittsburgh alone. So when you look at those multipliers, it really starts to add up as income to the taxpayer. And I'm just going to reiterate what I said last week. I I I object ideologically that the federal and state governments have preempted our local land use authority and are not allowing the people of Pittsburgh who own their streets to say no, if they don't want telecom to just plop down wherever they want. We have that right. You have to get a permit from us for your block party. But these telecom companies don't. And I think that's objectionable. If I had my way, I would prefer that we were allowed to do municipal broadband here, right? But we can't. We cannot here. And we should be able to do it where we want and when we want. We should be able to do it within the equity and inclusion goals that we're all talking about so many times, when Councilman Burgess proposed his last set of 10 goals and principles. We talked about infrastructure as one of the things that we do, that the city of Pittsburgh does, that we should be doing with an equity lens. How do we know these telecoms are going to be doing it with an equity lens? So I am totally in favor of us at least getting back the costs that our taxpayers are going to pay for, because these telecoms are railroading right over us in our city streets. So I'm, I got a little excited. So I'm, I got a little excited there.
Got you, Councilwoman.
But I, this is, you know, I stopped myself short of saying it last week. And I will also note that this is coming from the federal government under the Trump administration. And you'll notice that the candidate, Joe Biden, has just this week announced that he's in favor of municipal broadband in his platform, which at least I'm grateful for. And I do think that this is infrastructure that the citizens of Pittsburgh should be able to control. And so, like I say, I'm fully, fully confident that we should at least be, you know, getting back the dollars that our taxpayers are spending on this. So thank you, Director, for fighting so hard on it, and I'm very supportive today.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schlossberger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Gross. I agree with everything that you said, and even just to put a finer point on it again. It's not just income for the city. It's income that we have justified, that our directors have justified for the actual cost that it will take to ensure that that equity component is a piece of, of the, of the decision-making criteria that goes into the citing for these facilities. So just wanted to put that finer point on it again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is. You're abstaining as well, Councilman Coghill?
Yes, sir.
Two abstentions. Bill is recommended. Supplemental paper, Bill 531.
Bill 531, ordinance, amended the city of Pittsburgh code of ordinances and title for public places and property, Article 1, public right-of-way, Chapter 416. Obstruction, Section 41620, approval process for sidewalk cafe, including permits and fees to provide for certain temporary expedited measures for the city sidewalk cafe permit application process.
Councilman Coghill?
A motion to approve.
A second, very brief discussion, please.
Yes, discussion, Councilman Cross.
Thank you. Director, may I get you back one more time?
Yes, sir.
Hi, good morning. So before you're, you're coming to the city, one of the first things I did in, back in, I think, 2009 was to write the sidewalk cafe ordinance. And then we were instrumental in assisting the food court, if you will, that's existing in Market Square now. And so I have a vested interest in this, and I'm very, very supportive of sidewalk cafe and very protective of public right-of-way because we are a pedestrian-friendly and walkable city and want to make sure that everybody does. And so I have no reason to believe that any of that will be jeopardized by this by any way. And I am supportive. My questions are around, at this moment in time, we wish to waive fees for those that qualify for sidewalk cafe as well as expediting any applications that may come in. And if I'm wrong, just tell me and correct me.
Yes, we're waiving fees for the outdoor dining, just given the current circumstances.
Well, outdoor dining is not sidewalk cafe, because there are, there are a very.
Yes, we're waiving, we're waiving fees for both.
Okay, but criteria to be able to operate a sidewalk cafe will still be in place?
Yes, they're still going through the reviews from my department, from the Department of City Planning and P L I.
So as strange as this may sound, much of what drove us wanting to codify the process of obtaining sidewalk cafe was really fire safety, points of ingress and egress, and that we were seeing storefronts that were blocking fire exits with round tables with eight seats and umbrellas with furniture that looked like it belonged on a patio in Wexford or Cranberry, and God forbid, anything were ever to happen and a place of business needed to evacuate on a moment's notice, people would die. There's just no question about it. And so I just want to make certain that all the qualifications remain in place. I want to help and assist every way I can. We love the idea of outdoor dining. I love the idea of being able to expand to your next storefront. If that business owner gives you permission to expand into their space, happy to support that. Just want to be mindful and cautious that occupancies are granted. I apologize. I don't mean to be telling you your business. Occupancies are granted by your points of ingress and egress in, in, in case of an emergency. And so I just want to be mindful that everybody continues. I want a business to profit, but I want everybody to be safe in the process.
Yes, they still need to meet all of the safety requirements, and they're still going through those reviews.
Great. Generally speaking, a member of council signs off on the sidewalk cafe. Is that one of the things that will be removed?
Yes.
Expedite?
Yes, as you know, we're, we are sending weekly notices to council so that, trying to keep you abreast of all of those. But this is trying to move a little bit more swiftly.
Yeah, and I want to help in that, believe me. Those of us that have large food, beverage, service communities, I, I want to do everything in my power to support. I, I don't know anybody that's taken a bigger hit than food, beverage, service workers in, in this pandemic. And I want to do everything I can to assist. But if I understand this correctly, these will sunset at some point in time. These are not, what's the word I'm looking for, ad?
This is not, this is not a firm regulatory change. This is, this does, this is a temporary code adjustment that will sunset.
Yes, which means the applications that came in during this period will sunset as well?
That's correct. They'll need to reapply under the, the, under the normal processes, assuming.
The only thing normal today is a cycle on a washing machine, and that's about it. Yeah, I'm happy to help. Thank you for all the clarification, and I'm fully supportive and vote in favor of it today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilman Wilson.
Yes, Director, thanks for, thanks for being online for several things today. So I, I think you were alluding to that question about, you know, this coming back to council. Is that what you were talking about with sunlighting? So right now, it comes to come back to council every 30 days for us to approve? Is that correct?
This one will, this one still has the 30-day period. We, we want to see how this goes. And then we, we will continue to resume it. But yes, it just is a 30-day period for now, and you'll need to reassert that. But this should get us through the bulk of the project. So I guess I should say that these permits will, this process will last for 30 days. The permits actually extend through the end of the calendar year that are issued under this.
Okay, well, this process, if we approve it next week, and then there's, and it has come back to council in 30 days to approve this process of expediting this up to the, two days for the departments to respond. Madam Clerk, does that put us out, like, inside the recess for, for that approval next time? I mean, should we extend this so that we don't have to come back? I, I don't, I don't want to put us, our, you know, this legislation at risk of being stalled since businesses are hurting so much.
I appreciate that thought. I, I don't know.
Could it be 45 days, maybe?
Yeah, is there any reason why we can't extend it to 60 days? Are there any concerns?
Not for me. It was mostly just in deference to the council.
Okay, at least this first time, be good to extend this for some time so we don't have to worry about.
Do you want to make?
Interrogate?
Amend it?
I'm happy to make, make the motion to amend. Can we do it for 60 days?
And I'll second that. I'll second it. It was very brief discussion.
Discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, very brief, may I?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to support that. We're, we're really limited to the amount of time that we really have to be doing outdoor dining. We are looking at, let's just say, August, September, October. We're only looking at about 90 days, really, before it's going to be difficult, especially if you have a rainy fall or things like that, to be able to do it. So I, I'm happy to, to support, even if it were to be the 90 days to, to get us through the weather. I'm happy to, to consider that, because we, we are really on a very limited timeframe here. The weather's going to change shortly. I was out, where was I? I forget yesterday. Everything for Thanksgiving and Halloween was out. Yep, already. What is it, July, July 15th? Yeah, so, anyway, those are my comments. Happy to support.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the amendment, Councilwoman Gross?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask some questions on both since I'm not sure about the 90 days, because I'm curious about the.
Just for clarity, 60 days.
So the motion's 60 days, but still, just to say, I know we don't want it to expire during recess, for sure. But I'm wondering kind of how the, I understand the fees are waived, but I know that I have signed sidewalk cafe permits since I've been in office. Are you still going to be including that, Director?
So all of the, all of the official sidewalk cafes are still in operation. They, most of them have renewed their permits. We have, we have waived fees for the traditional sidewalk cafes for this year as well, just for equity with these sort of, you know, street modifications associated with the COVID-19 crisis.
And I'm happy about that, too. But are you going to be getting councilmember signatures on the sidewalk cafes?
Right now, we're sending everyone through this amended process just so that we don't have dual processes going on at the same time. So no, we're not getting the councilperson's signatures on the.
So this ordinance, amended amendment that's in front of us gives you the ability to not charge the fees, which I'm supportive of. But also, does it, like, permanently eliminate the council?
Only temporary.
So it's, so the whole thing temporary. So yeah, this is why I'm kind of a little mixed up. I apologize to every, to members. They, let's say I'm a cafe in Bloomfield, and we pass this amendment. And then I sign up for sidewalk cafe, which is, again, I don't think we said today, but like sidewalk seating means I can buy my sandwich inside and sit outside. But this is sidewalk cafe means I can sit down at a table outside, and a waiter or waitress is going to be able to come to me, take my sandwich order, maybe even give me a beer with my sandwich, right? So that's, I don't want to drink beer, but you know, so that's a different, completely different category that, so we're, we're expediting and eliminating fees for literally having this outdoor restaurant service and making it easier so that restaurants can have the outdoor service and be able to safely with COVID, physical distancing, serve customers outside. Am I getting a temporary permit then, under this ordinance?
Yes, it is a.
On the restaurant?
If you're the restaurant, you're getting a 90-day permit from us right now.
So is that the timeframe we're talking about, or we're talking about the sunsetting of the ordinance in 30, 45, 60, or 90 days? I got a little mixed up. Like, am I, like, which one, which one are we thinking about amending here?
So currently, you're talking about amending the date on which we could issue that 90-day permit. So if it sunsets in 45 days, if we issue a permit within that period, it would still be good for, for the 90 days from the date of.
Got it. Okay, I just, I, I figure, I knew there were probably two different times, you know, listed in here. So it's a 90-day permit. In either case, we're just talking about when the ordinance should sunset and be, have to be renewed. So I, I'm comfortable with the motion as well. I apologize. I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was voting on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need further discussion on the amendment?
No, no, no. Sorry, not the amendment.
So all those in favor of us amending it to 60 days, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended. Additional conversation on the actual bill. It's still with you, Councilman Wilson?
All right. So Director, I wanted to just ask about the exit plan for people that have ventured into this. Will they be grandfathered in at all? Is there any strategy to try and, you know, once they've passed their approval from different departments? And once the, hopefully, this pandemic goes away at some point, you know, is a strategy for them to keep some of the seating?
Yeah, they, they won't be grandfathered in, per se, but they will have 95% of the documentation and reviews that they would need to get than the, the regular kind of permit. They would need to go back and, and get the councilmember sign off on it. And then they'd have to pay the fees. That's really all they would have to do. But we would have already done the reviews, P L I, city planning, so it should be a, I, hopefully, a relatively painless process to do it in the ordinary.
Okay, thanks. And I'm not sure who, who takes this, but there's an, there's an error in part F. Part F is repeated twice. I believe it brings along the old legislation. It repeats it. Thanks.
Thank you. Schlossberger?
Thank you. So just a couple of points. One is, on the last point that Councilman Wilson brought up, I think that, yes, an exit strategy is going to be necessary and facilitated well. But I also think that this is a real opportunity to test drive some sort of creative solutions more permanently for restaurants. Expecting that those that survive this period, that's very, very challenging to food and beverage industry locations, are going to continue to need to think about outdoor locations to, for long-term survival. And the more that we can be, the more that our flexibility with them now can then translate into perhaps more permanent and beautiful sparks. The parking place, parking space parks and seating, creative use of our, of our, of our public realm. I think is a really good thing. So I'm hoping that this can be sort of proof of concept for a lot of restaurants. Second, as others have mentioned, this is just probably one of the most hardest-hit industries in terms of unpredictability of their business and their employees and their status and food orders and all sorts of things and customer base. So anything that we can do to help them get outside, I think, is the key. And I really want to give major thanks to the, to Domi, to Director, you and your staff for always showing up, being there for the meetings with business owners, being there on-site to walk through streets and sidewalks, to give advice and to help them through the process of applying and to making, for making that process as seamless as possible. And I also want to point out that on, if you look at the Domi COVID-19 Response website, you can see right there all of the applications that are in for these sort of street modification permits and, and see where they are in the process. So that's helpful for the public to know as well.
Thank you. President Smith?
Thank you. I just want to thank you, Director, for the work that you've done in our district. You've really helped a lot of businesses stay open and quickly, and so I just really want to thank you for that. It's really working well, and for some cases, there's some places we still need to look at. Curbside pickup is the other thing people are looking at. And so you've just been very flexible in trying to keep the businesses up. So I want to thank you for that. But I do want to know about accessibility, that that will still be something that you monitor for ADA accessibility for people when you're giving them these permits? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we do review them for ADA access. And then additionally, we have our right-of-way inspectors go out. We have authorized our inspectors to have some additional time in evenings and weekends when the outdoor dining is more prevalent so that they can do the reviews for ADA accessibility. We do know that tables and chairs tend to creep. And so we, we do need to, to be vigilant and remind our business owners that while we, we really want to help them thrive, we need to make sure that our public rights of way are still traversable for people of all abilities.
Yeah, and I do want to mention, like, in Mount Washington, particularly on Shiloh Street, a lot of people had mentioned why we didn't shut down the sidewalks instead. But it was actually, we, and you and I were there at the time. We saw people in, using wheelchairs and crutches and other things that were using the sidewalks and not, and not the street. So it was better for us to shut down the street because the, the ramps, the, the safety and all those things were on the sidewalks. And that was a little bit safer for our residents that are in wheelchairs. So I just want to say that it depends, I think, on the area. So I just want to say that it depends, I think, on the area. But the other concern I have is with some of the businesses and how you're notifying other businesses of things that, um, you know, shutting down streets, sidewalk cafes, anything. Is there any input that they have as well?
They, they do have input. And again, it is a, it is a bit of a casualty of moving as quickly as we're trying to move to, to respond to these. That we do, it is, the burden is put on the applicant to inform their, their neighbors and the neighboring establishment to bring that. Uh, forward to us. So that is an expectation, um, before we give approval. But Domi has not, we, we, we have not been able to independently verify that. So we are going on faith that the applicants, um, have closed the loop with their fellow businesses. And every one of them is conditioned that if we receive complaints, um, from, from the other businesses, if they did not do their due diligence. Uh, in that, that we will rescind the permit, um, and, and they will not be able to have this outdoor space than if they haven't. Done that communication with their fellow businesses.
That's my only concern is because, you know, I did get some complaints about people said that they weren't notified. You were under the impression they were notified because they had signed letters with the people's names on. There was a lot of stuff that was happening. So that's my concern with council not having approved, having the oversight, because we do know our districts and, um. And we can't make sure that, uh, other people are notified. At least they know who to contact. But I, um, since it's such a short time period, we'll see how it goes. But I think if, we'll have to revisit if it's not going well by September. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. New papers, Bill 500.
Bill 500, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into temporary construction easement in lieu of imminent domain with the owners of certain properties in the 24th ward of the city. Adjacent to the Cowley Park where landslide remediation work related to public park purposes.
Need a motion? Councilman Cocke?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 501.
Bill 501, resolution authorizing the director of the Department of Finance on behalf of the city. To enter into temporary construction easement in lieu of imminent domain with the owners of certain property in the 19th ward of the city. Known as 1599 Fallow Fields Avenue and 1545 Fallow Fields Avenue for landslide remediation work related to public roadway purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 502.
Bill 502, resolution granting unto Mark DiNatale, their successors, and assigns a privilege and license. To construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new retaining wall and fence at Sycamore Street and Red Oak Way in the 19th Ward, Second Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Mr. Wilson. New papers, Bill 555.
Bill 555, resolution authorizing the mayor and Department of City planning to enter into a professional services agreement with Boom Concepts and/or Bloomfield Garfield Corporation. To coordinate a program of responses temporary art by local artists for temporary display on city-owned structures in the public realm at a cost not to exceed $5,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussions?
Woman?
Councilman, Councilman Gross?
No, 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 no. I just was wondering how Councilwoman Gross was, that's all.
Oh, uh, Boom Concept is a wonderful community partner and so is wonderful Garfield Corporation. They are both located on the north side of Penn Avenue, which is officially in District Nine, but they are actually one of the partners for the neighborhood on, on, um, in my district as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is recommended. One deferred paper, Bill 492.
Bill 492, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget. To enter into an agreement with community-based organizations for community and economic development for planning assistance in various neighborhoods in the city. And providing operation support for these groups and provide for the payment at a cost not to exceed $500,000.
Motion to hold one week. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is held one week. Uh, that takes us to Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilwoman Strasburger. We have four new papers, Bill 505.
Bill 505, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into an agreement with SciCom Data Systems for professional services relating to continuing maintenance support and upgrades to city law. The Department of Law's legal case management and administrative support software system at a cost not to exceed $11,376.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Bill is recommended. That takes us to Bill 515.
Bill 515, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a three-year contract agreement with SRE. Granting uncapped citywide access to SRE's product for all departments to build and maintain a city-authorized system of records. Make data-driven decisions, share information across departments, perform advanced analytical and share information with the public. To meet the needs of the city at a sum not to exceed $600,000.
Motion to approve with the discussion.
Second.
So I wanted to just brief council members on this because it is a multi-year contract. Um, so currently the city is deploying, um. A considerable amount of this type of technology within various departments, um, innovation, IMP, Department of City Planning, Police, Fire, EMS, DPW, DOMI, and 311. And, um, it's, it has to do with the GIS software that we use. And so it, it would, the recommendation from those departments to IMP and then to me and to council is that we have. An enterprise agreement so that count, different departments can create and also share among the departments, the work that they're doing in types, in these types of, um. A GIS types of projects or projects that involve GIS technology. I'm happy to pull anyone to the table and invite anyone to the table if there are further questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Um, I've always been a fan of, um, GIS, the power of being able to look at data. Graphically and geographically so that these kinds of softwares do both, right? And I think we, we especially need, um. As a body, as city council, the ability to look at how the city's changing. Cause it's actually, you know, stayed the same where there really weren't, um, differences from year to year or even decade to decade. In where we're businesses, where we're community facilities, where we're, uh, new buildings. Um, and now we know that we are under a lot of change in, in some neighborhoods. And we really need, I think, as a body to be able to gauge. Um, where things are happening and where they are not, and where different things are happening for our districts. So that we can kind of come together and figure out the best policies. Um, we've had these discussions a lot where, you know, but very often it's District Seven that is different than many of the other districts. Because we have so much intensely hot real estate market. And I think this was, is going to lend us a lot of power. You know that I'm often skeptical of the power of, um, these things. But I actually think I just got like an Esri newsletter in the mail this week. I've been following GIS and the power of GIS software for, for a couple of decades now, since I was doing my own graduate work in sociology. And looking at how to talk about the changes in cities, um, over time. So, uh, I am supportive of this. That literally just happened to be there. I, I didn't actually notice this on the agenda today or didn't, I didn't actually put that together. So this is not a lot of money for the kind of, um. Underpinning of all the various other sets of software that we've been, you know, spending money on so that other departments, again, will just be able to more easily. Send data back and forth and share and overlay their data is the way I'm understanding this. And then also I want to make sure that it's, since it says it's an enterprise license, that city council and city council members will also have access. Cause there are very many times that I am hounding city departments to try to give me data geographically. Um, and it's, it's sometimes they're busy and is, are not, you know, able to accommodate my requests in a timely way that will, in the timeframe that I need the answers. So, um, if, if there's anyone, if you know, Councilwoman, if there's anyone else who knows, that we will also be able to have the access to this software, since it is enterprise software.
I do not know. Is there someone who is present who can answer that question?
Yes, I'm Shereen Abdal Sami. Um, I'm the Senior Manager of Applications for Innovation and Performance. And was previously the GIS manager. The, um, yes, sure, everybody within the city of Pittsburgh, everybody will have access to Esri software.
Great, thank you. And I want to say a special thanks to Ms. Abdal Sami, who is printing paper maps for one of my community groups today. And so I appreciate that. And I really appreciate the tight, the quick turnaround, because I know that we're all kind of working remotely. And, and city staff are, are, you know, struggling to, to do the work that's physical work. And I'm getting physical maps for, um, a food kitchen, doing meal delivery today. So I really appreciate that. So I'm, I'm very supportive today. Thank you for answering my question.
You're very welcome.
Sorry, I was.
All done, sorry.
Um, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 516.
Bill 516, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into startup participation agreements. With selected entities as part of the sixth cohort of PGH Lab and further authorizing the mayor and director of Innovation and Performance. To enter into program participation agreements with local municipal entities to allow such entities to test product and services as part through PGH Lab.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none.
I just want to say that this is one of the more exciting programs that we have in IMP and I'm, I'm solidly in favor.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill 521.
Bill 521, resolution repealing, amending, and reenacting Resolution Number 18. Which authorized and direct the Bureau of Cable Communications, Department of Public Works, broadcast all of council's regular legislative sessions. Standing committee meetings, setting forth the responsibilities of the Department of Innovation and Performance with respect to meetings of city council. And to reflect various changes in the city's departmental organization structure and other changes to reflect technological innovation since 1983.
Motion to approve.
I, I think we have a request from Councilman Burgess to hold for one week. Oh, there he is.
Motion, hold one week, please.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is held one week. Now, that takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross with one supplemental paper, Bill 564.
Bill 564, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into a memorandum of agreement. With the URA HACP Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Officers and 327 NLLC.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. I see Mr. Carter's hand up and I, I'm happy to defer. I'm very familiar with the site. It's very close to my district. It's in Councilman Burgess's district. Thank you. I'll defer.
If you're comfortable, I won't even go through it, but we can just go through it and approve it. It's just, uh, it's up to you.
Yeah, this is required by the, the development process. So, um, it's an exciting project. And I know I get inquiries about it because people think it's in my district. So, yeah, congratulations. I'm happy to see you today.
May I?
Councilman Cross? Since there is no summary attachment to the bill, and I believe the bill was introduced in Roll Eight, and I honestly don't understand the bill. I would like to have, uh, the councilmen or Sean explain what we're going to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Cross. Thank you, Reverend Burgess. Um, as you know, there's a, an old Jewish synagogue at 327 North Negley Avenue in Garfield on the border of East Liberty. It, I believe it used to house the Urban Academy Charter School and it is now being converted into housing. Now, we have on the line a representative from the URA and a representative from the developer entity, if you have any questions. But primarily because the site is of historic significance. The city, the Housing Authority, the Urban Redevelopment Authority, the State Historic Preservation Office. And the developer were required to enter into an agreement, which is also entered into by the Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation. And Preservation Pittsburgh to lay out certain responsibilities and certain conditions, if anything, if any unnecessary alterations happen to the site. It's pretty.
That's good. Yeah. No, that's great. No, that's, uh, uh, that explains it very well. Happy, 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 happy to support. Can you give me the address again? I would love to look the property up online. I'd love to see the physical, uh, uh, being of the property if you could, please. Okay?
327 North Negley Avenue.
Perfect. That's what the 327 NLLC stands for. Gotcha. Thank you very much. Happy to support.
Near East Liberty Boulevard, the intersection of East Liberty Boulevard. It's not far from there and.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Um, that does exhaust our agenda. However, I need to do two things. Our budget director brought it to my attention that we did not approve the P cards. I didn't see them in my packet, so I apologize. So we do need a motion to approve the P cards.
So moved.
Second.
There, there, here, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. Also, I believe she is on the line. There was a registered speaker that I did not see on my list. And she would like to provide her comments. Um, so I would like to take her now before we do our meeting announcements. And that is Ikuhana Malhu Kena. This, maybe she did not stay on the line. Okay. I don't believe she did. She indicated she was going to wait to speak. Um, with that, we'll now move on to our meeting announcements. Cablecast Public Hearing is scheduled for this afternoon at 5:00 PM on Bills 404, 405, 406. And 410 as they relate to the Stop the Violence Fund and policing. If you're speaking at today's hearing, please call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 3:30 today. And also comments by email via city clerk's office at PittsburghPA.com. Council also has scheduled a series of Cablecast public post agendas and public hearings on policing in Pittsburgh. Police reform and budgeting for the following dates. The post agenda will occur on Thursday, July 16. Also include discussion on Bills 404, 405, 406, and 410 as it relates to the Stop the Violence Fund and policing at 10:00 AM. And on Monday, July 27, also at 10:00 AM. We, public hearings will occur on Saturday, July 18 at 12:00. And Tuesday, July 21, and Wednesday, July 22, both at 6:00 PM. To register to speak at these hearings, please call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 5:00 PM, July 17. And by 3:30 AM, July 21 and 22. And also for comments.
Mr. Chair? Sorry. Yeah, I'm talking today. Too much coffee, I think. Uh, on Bill 521, we held for a week, introduced by Councilmember Burgess. I don't know if it's the council member. by Councilmember Burgess. I don't know if it's the council member you or the clerk. Could we have a summary set with that? There's no further information other than the title of the bill. I'd just like to explore what it is we're ultimately going to be voting on next week. Thank you.
Will do. Madam President?
Thank you. I just want to say if you think, we do have the post-agenda on Thursday in the hearings that you mentioned, but we have two post-agendas. I did send an email out asking members if they wanted to have anyone that they wanted to invite. I think Reverend Burgess, he responded and sent some name, someone over. And Councilman Cross and I spoke and he sent someone over. But if any other members wanted somebody to be a part of the post-agenda, please make sure that you send an email or let me know. It's better through email so I can let the Clerk's Office know as well. And, but we do have the list and that's going out and I think we have a very diverse group of people. So we still think there's a few other people that we'd like to hear from. So if anybody has any recommendations, please send that. And then I want to talk a little bit about the Ewald House and the vote with Ewald House. And we're hearing a lot of public comments, some articles in the paper about this vote. And I just want to make it clear that before we took the vote, I made sure that members knew that if they were going to vote to hold the bill, that they essentially were voting for the nomination to be approved, to sustain that. And so I'll just say that I think there's no sense in us having another vote since we knew with the members, you know, they knew what they were voting for when they voted for it. So when they, when people have been calling us and asking us to have another vote, I actually think a lot of people voted for it because they really care. The ones who did vote for it care a lot about preservation. For me, I really did think that the community deserved a vote. And so that's why I couldn't vote for that at the time. But I do think that members did their research and they knew what they were voting for. So I don't want, I don't know that it wasn't a vote, is what I'm trying to say in some way. I think in some way it was, it was their vote for preservation. And I just want to make sure that the people that are calling us, the people that are writing articles and the people that, you know, continue to come down and talk, that feel that, you know, we should still be calling for another vote, that they understand that in some way it was voted on. It was pretty clear that there was, you know, at least five votes in favor of a, of holding it, which meant, which meant essentially the preservation. So I just want to say that. I just, I really wish that we would have voted so that we wouldn't be visiting this and having these articles. So anyway, and so I think that's, that's it.
Thank you. I'm told that, hold it our registered, I'll come to you, Councilman. I'm told that our registered speaker is actually still on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. If you give your name and your three minutes will begin.
I'm a bit disgruntled after having to keep calling into the office to get this, what I had to say out. My title is Ikuhana Mahukina, calling on behalf of the Air Force Confederacy of Aborigine American People. And what I wanted to say was I wanted for specifically Ricky Burgess to visit downstairs in the corridor of the city-county building. And you will see that as of 1701, 17 through 1778, the placard that bears William Pitt, who is noted as the Earl of Chatham, the Prime Minister of England, is here in America, still ruling with English, England law. The charter that was given to Pennsylvania by King Charles II was granted in 1681. Forty-five thousand square miles of indigenous land has been unlawful and given to these people who continue to rule with foreign law on our land. And this part of my child crying in the background as an hour ago, he was sleeping. And I would have been able to give what I said to the council floor in peace and in harmony. But it is time. As Frederick Douglass stated in the folly of colonization, "Such a crime against justice, such a crime against gratitude, should it ever be attempted, would certainly bring a national punishment, which would cause the earth to shudder. It would bring a stain upon this nation, like the blood on Lady Macbeth. The waters of the ocean would not suffice to wash out their infirmity. It is time for justice in this land of indigenous people." And I will yield to take care of my child as I've waited for over an hour to have something to say. Peace, light, and love in harmony.
I'll wait for the, all right?
You're good.
I just wanted to add my two cents on that Ewald House deal. First and foremost, I have a problem with the Historic Preservation Committee. I really think that we need to take a deep look at that and how they operate. I respect Historic Preservation. You know, my own house was built in 1880. And if the homeowners were here today, they'd say, oh, there's the house because it looks identical. And I planned it that way and I built it that way. I really respect the people of Lawrenceville and the stakeholders and, you know, and I know that the development there is just out of control. And, and I do side with them. I do want this house saved, you know. But I have questions as to how we went about it. And when Councilman Wilson, you know, voted to hold that bill, I was kind of scratching my head about it. I didn't think it looked good on us. I still disagree with that. But that being said, you know, it's done, what's done is done. However, I really want to have a post-agenda, call for a post-agenda after our break with the Historic Preservation of Pittsburgh as to how they operate. And for starters, when, you know, when you're going to keep that home from somebody or from somebody selling it, well, I think you damn well better sure have the finances or the resources to pay for it. And when I talk, when you talk about market, fair market value, the fair market value is set by the homeowner. And, you know, whatever price that she was offered, that is the fair market value. I heard a lot of people talking about, you know, if they listed it at fair market value, which I don't think was fair to the homeowner. So, so, yeah, with that, that's, that's all I had to say about it. It's just put a bad taste in my mouth, the whole thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else from members? Madam President?
All right, I'm going to say just one more thing about, I just, I, I want to say that I think that you should call for the post-agenda and I think you should do it today and then we'll schedule when we get back. But I think that's the whole thing is we have a lot of questions about the process. And I do feel badly for these, for the property owners. And, but I also feel that I don't know that area as well as Councilwoman Gross. She doesn't know my area as well as, as I do. And, and I think that out of respect for our colleagues, we try to do what's best here. But I do think that I prefer, I would have preferred a vote to have taken place so that there would be none of this later. But, but I do, I do think that the whole process is something that we need to look at, something Reverend Burgess has been talking about for years. And I think now is the time for us to actually do something and change the way that we're doing some of these things. Because if now, I mean, if anything, we're looking at statutes and historic, you know, documents and other things across the entire country. It's definitely a time for us to look at how we do how Historic Preservation in the city, I think, and what criteria we're setting. So I think it's a good time for us to do that. I'm sorry that it wasn't in place prior to this.
Madam President?
Yes.
Who do I call it?
Better talk to Councilman LaValle.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. LaValle, I'd like to agenda with him.
Okay. Is there, is that a motion to do a post-agenda? I'm sorry.
Motion for a post-agenda for, with-
Second.
Yeah, second, I'll support. Very brief discussion on it, if I may. I am, Mr. Chair, can I?
Yes.
Yep, okay. I'm a preservationist at heart and I, I'd like the councilmen, I live in a house that I believe was built in 1868, which is just post-Civil War. You know, I, I lived in this house my entire life. It's as part, as much a part of me as any other thing in my life. I can't separate my identity from where I've spent my life and, and what the house means to me. And I can't imagine one day someone coming in and bulldozing it to put up a prefab, you know, drop-in place, you know, with an integral garage to replace it. But having said that, what continues to trouble me about the process of historic designation is that sometimes it's being used as a weapon and that it comes, if parties are disgruntled about the decisions being made about their property in terms of historic preservation, it, it is often, nomination is often used then as a way to prevent demolition and it comes to the council and then we are required to be Solomon and we have to cut the baby. And they are, and the 13 years I've been here, we've had a number of these and they have been very, very difficult on the council, extremely difficult decisions to make. I don't know that I have ever erred on the side of demolition as to preservation. And I will continue to be a preservationist. But in terms of discussion around process by which it takes place and ultimately coming to council to play Solomon to split the baby, I'm in agreement. I'd love to have a conversation about that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Appreciate it. Yeah, I'm fully supportive of the idea of the post-agenda. I'm happy to vote for that. I also agree that, as in many times you've heard me say, that some of our ordinances and our policies around things are maybe a little dated. And since there's, especially with increased development pressure like in my district, but also increasingly other parts of the city, we want to revisit it. We want to, I think it's our responsibility as the council to figure out a way that doesn't pit these two things against one another and creates better policies that are more fair to property owners, but also more fair to preservation. So that instead of having, as Councilman Cross said, very, very well, thank you, that it doesn't come to this kind of a battlefront, right? That we know that there's a lot of work that we could have done better as a city around preservation. We've been reminded in recent months, maybe last year, that there was work many years ago in creating these kinds of lists to proactively protect places. And yes, maybe we should put better funds in. And I would like to see more participation for that kind of funding from the preservationist community itself. And it seems like we've just kind of lost our way in actually proactively protecting and financially supporting places, probably because of 15 years of bankruptcy and austerity. But we can, I think we can do better and it will avoid these kinds of, you know, stress and battlefronts on, over individual properties. So I appreciate everybody's willingness to work on this and really dig in and understand how we can do better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion from members? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minute and adjourn the meeting.
I don't think, we didn't vote on the post-agenda.
Oh, you're-
That was discussion on the post-agenda.
You're right, we did not. All those in favor say aye.
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 We'll work with the Madam Clerk to schedule it for when we return from recess. Anything else? Seeing none, motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Have a good day, everyone.
Yeah, be safe, everybody.